Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic, our wishes stands.
One nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's do this. So I don't do you. Okay. Um, first item night for on the agenda would be the minutes of the meeting from January third.
Move a four of the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman D and a second from Councilman Murgia. Any changes or corrections? Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have to stand approved. You know when you're leaving? Out of state?
No.
On a jet plane? Subject to change.
I would guess the twenty sixth of January and I'll be back on the. Fourth of February.
Okay, so you're on the meeting. Anyone else? Sarah?
Hmm.
Stay hang home for a while. Enough travel in your world.
Yeah.
Other than Helen, I'm not going anywhere. Well, ready. Um, next item, that's the appointing of a city council president. And our charter says we have to have a city council president. So, uh, I would open up the floor for nominations to point city council president, current president, sitting president in his councilman D.
Need to be rotating or?
It does not.
I nominate Councilman D again.
I have a nomination from Councilman Howard.
See, you've learned the trick. If you nominate someone else, you can't nominate yourself.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Cooley. Any other nominations? There are none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman D, welcome back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
The next item would be vote on revolving loan committee recommendation and your application is in here. You can see it's from TK Aesthetics.
You just look at the recommendation.
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, Jody, but you said the the board recommended approval of this pending her passing her state.
And it is there in the recommendation.
Yep.
So how do we catch that in a motion?
I would get a motion that says that the loan is being approved pending the applicants. The recipient receiving the applicant, a copy of the applicant's successful completion and passing rewards.
So.
That works.
That's how you want it?
Jody?
I would just make the motion that if this is what you wanted to do, that you want to approve.
But I move that we pass. There that we fund alone once TK Aesthetics has passed or once Tegan has passed her state boards to have her license.
And present us with a copy.
And present us with the copy.
Second.
Another motion in Councilman Murgia and a second in Councilman D. Any other discussion? Our loan balance is sitting pretty good right now. Are there any other loans out there pending that we're aware of, Joe?
Well, we've been, we've had about, what is it, one a month or two or three months?
This will be.
I guess Chuck was was here in November and I don't say it once.
And this one, and then he had had one for.
Almost a year, so like.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here none that passes, we'll let Tegan know and get us a copy of the license upon passing her stuff and we'll get her taken care of. Next item would be a preliminary discussion of social media policy. This was brought to me by Council D. Councilman D, have you guys read the proposed social policy?
I did not see that one.
Where was it?
It was in the middle of. In lieu of that.
Yeah, I'm if I'd like everyone to read it. Um, this is. First, I want to say this is for preliminary discussion. This is not a reflection on anyone. Or how I feel about it. I think it's boilerplate template that I pulled. Um. But I'd like the whole council to read it so we can have a discussion on it. I think it affects us as electeds, our staff. Um. Yeah, I think it'd be a good discussion, so I would move that we postpone it until the next meeting.
Well, so it's just a. We're just discussing. Yeah, right. So we we don't have to do any motions or anything.
But what's the only one? Yeah.
Yeah.
Not enough. I want everybody to have read it.
Yeah.
Before we get into this. So we'll postpone till our, we'll put it off to our next meeting, which in February. Okay? Claims would be our next item up for bids.
I mean, approval of the claims.
I have a motion from Councilman D and a second from Councilman Howard. Um, large claim in there. We bought a a loader. So, um. The other, uh, one of the other claims in there I'll talk about in my report, but, um, other than that, nothing jumped out. A front end loader. A larger front end loader than what we have. It will handle our, um. Front mounted grinder. Far more efficiently without having counterweights on it.
It's for street work. Mostly, no. For anything that requires.
Water, water, yeah, and water, super. Streets, whatever.
General.
This had been on Mike's radar for several years and he finally got, um, Jim Remaker to decide to buy a brand new one.
So this is a used one?
It is a used one, yes. It's a wheel loader. It's like we used to move the snowbanks on Main Street.
Okay.
It's just a. But yeah, it's a larger version without. Yeah. Some call them wheel loaders.
Yeah.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pay the bills. Quick, like run through some report reports. Uh, law enforcement, uh, thirty one eight said he his system is down, so he couldn't get a report for us and he apologized. City judge report is in here. Um, I know what it is because I wrote on it. Come on, Christopher Todd. There it was. I can see it. Um. And Jennifer sent me hers today. Her report is three for the month was three, uh, three cases and they were all PFMA's. Which pretty much coincides with what Senate Court does as well. Mike's report, I don't know if it's in there. But I have it. Um. Knock on wood, as as he said, everything in the treatment plant is been smooth. Had one minor equipment failure on an anaerobic mixer that was revolved within the day. It's early to know for sure, but preliminary data suggests that the wastewater improvement project in twenty twenty two may have significant effect to decreasing our. Our affluent or influent flows. They're continuing to collect sewer video on the collection system and are about sixty five percent complete. Um, wastewater influence remain low and sample analysis has remained very good. Public water system, all of our tests have come back good. We received all of the three quarter inch ones, Jody. We've got all of our three quarters meters now?
Yeah.
Okay, and are actively installing them. Installation is a slow process.
No, we have all of them that are.
That are what?
We have everything that that isn't a.
Okay, for these are, okay. Um. About a hundred and five of them are in. We're asking folks out there to call City Hall, make sure we have a current updated telephone number. As we go through the books and start calling folks. We find it disconnects and things like that, so it makes it, it makes it hard on the staff to track down these folks that we can, so we can get into their, uh, houses and do it. And the ones we are contacting first are those, those that have a water meter inside their, inside their residence and not an outdoor pit. Um. The flow meter at the Ricken pump station is no longer accurate, so pumping rates are currently being calculated using a pump runtime and the known pumping rate. They've acquired a new flow meter and are working to get it scheduled to get it installed. Water audit for December. Showed we lost fifty nine percent. We pumped six point four seven million gallons. We accounted for two point six four four, so we lost roughly three point eight three. Um, they continue to collect data and mapping services for the upcoming water improvement project. And settle had several water service line replacements in person since last record. Uh, streets, winter twenty twenty two has required much more snow removal than last year. Last year, we never put the plows, took a plow that once, so we've been out quite a bit. Uh, warm rider crews are trying to catch up with some paddles in which the streets are getting gravel. And are working to obtain some asphalt millings from various contractors use the summer prior to ship soon. Uh. Compost is available still and there are no pile northwest of the weather beater. Uh, we have resumed some leaf pickup when manpower allows it with the warmer temperatures, so you may see the the, uh. Truck out there. If you have a large pile of leaves out there, reach out to us. Um, we have a chance to grant from DNRC Urban Forestry, which will assist with the tree nursery and that work will begin this spring. We are also happy to announce the hiring of Grant Jaeger to the City Public Works Department and. I forgot to tell Brown, he was supposed to be here with ten thousand words or less to address the people who.
Oh, he's watching mask.
Yeah, we'll work on them.
How much was that tree, Brad?
I want to say sixty five hundred, but I I it's on my desk.
Uh, Public Works will be attending Montana River Water Conference. Slices operators will be getting continued education and Brett Jaeger will begin his testing for a water operator. Uh, our crews are also attending attending an excavation seminar later this month on safety. Other regular normal mix of everyday tasks, water shut offs, meters, sampling wastewater, garbage, trees, line locates, um, and other things have kept them busy. Um, they have been working very smoothly. We have, it's been kind of nice. Um, we're gonna skip Joey for a second while she's gone. Tom's got nothing on the business, um, no new.
No, sorry.
No.
Seven thousand one hundred and six dollars.
Seventy one something?
Seventy one or six.
Six, six, four. Don't ask me.
It probably based on some number of the state.
You want to book, uh, your email that?
Sure, would you?
Um, Jody's docs are in here, which tells me Jody's ducks are in a row, her doctor in here, her doctor in a row.
Hello.
Yeah, um, it's been. Actic at times here at City Hall, but things to be going good as far as I know. Haven't heard to be otherwise. Councilman Murgia, what bringeth you to the table?
Oh, I haven't done much. I I was preparing for my first show classic in my position, so. That that took up pretty much all of my free time. But forty third show of classic was. Well attended, people were in good spirits and. And I think people were happy. Um, the one complaint or I guess. Question was, um, why there are more places to stay in town. I had several bus drivers talk to me. Couple stayed in Conrad, one in Fairfield, one team in Fairfield, then at least one team in Mary Falls. Um, I know, and and I told him, I I said, I don't have an answer. I'm new to this job, but, um. Putting that out there and there's people that want to house teams. Can hold myself or Jenny Lee.
Okay.
The team that was at the, at our church left it cleaner than it was when I let them in, so.
Okay, Councilman D?
Uh, not a whole lot. It's been the. Most of the grandson, brainstone kind of month. Um, a little sad to hear that the we're not going to be hosting division nulls. Believe it is district divisionals, the swim team this year. Um, we were on the slate, but. Got.
Lines?
Yeah, well, Lions team, yeah.
Yeah.
Um. But other than that, I don't want.
Next chamber meetings?
The eighth.
Eighth of February at John Henry's.
Hmm.
Um, anything else?
Nope.
Councilman Howard?
Hi, Scals coming up February eleventh.
For the fire department, yep.
Fire department fundraiser up there at the golf course, so the program will be open. So the city will get a little, well. That part of the thing, they. They do the every services and the meal, so you'll have a little bit going on there for the middle of winter. Um. I've been getting several calls on the new water project coming up, people inquiring. There's going to be any break on the fees or the hookup as we're going by and stuff like that, so maybe something.
We are working diligently on that.
Okay. I have at least. Two for sures. I want to do it or just kind of start a budget for it, so we can get them an answer sooner than later.
The plan is yes, but it's just a matter of.
You know, and there there's even on one's a bear lot and can we just get it up to the curb?
Stomping in.
Oh, there you go. You know, and then get it off the street and that way the streets can be fixed and we're not going back into them. Um, I think that would be a good thing for like any big lobby.
Also, I thought, yeah, I kind of liked that.
Maybe do that before we fix the streets. Um, I kind of want to bring something up, consider everybody thinks, um, when I first moved here, we had. We had a bonding requirement. At least for the plumbers to work for the city and the city around the utilities. What I'm raising the question is, what about a contracting license required within city limits? The reason I'm gonna go there is. One of my plumbing buddies who just got out of jail back in the neighborhood and.
Wanted to plumb?
He's back in the fraud department and.
I can tell you from.
It's one of the ways to maybe get the residents, way to call in, see who's.
Yeah.
License properly. He's not even licensed with the state. Like, I'm not gonna say his name, but. He's out of jail, he's back in here and he's.
Let me look at the orders. I think you're close people.
Well, yeah, but he's coming into town and working on somebody's house. I mean.
We can put it out there at least.
I guess if we could do something, just maybe protect the residents or give them some information out there somehow. I mean, I I used to be bonded because I would come in and, you know, my first mover, I did the water taps. You know, so it was a different thing, you know, now Mike's taken over and he does on the phone. Then Kelly started doing really, but when I first came here. I was doing all of that, so I was required and. I think it was just a five thousand dollar bond. I think it only caught him a hundred bucks a year.
That is correct. In most, most municipalities in the state of Montana require plumbers to have a pipe finish bond, plumbing pipe finish bond. An excavation bond, you're doing excavation within the city limits. And things like that.
No, I'm not doing this to discourage any sort of sort of small business or startup thing. It's just. Because this guy's a problem.
Yeah.
Well, we had, we had similar problems when we had that storm in, what, twenty thirteen and. Roofers came in with a business card and and there are homes that it took them six, eight years to get fixed. After those roofers, and I use the term lightly, put a new roof on. So I think it's a good idea.
And to be honest with you, most cities, if you call for contractor calls to pull permit, they're not going to give them permit unless the city has a copy of their. Insured certificate on file showing the city of Missoula or Hamilton or Victor or whoever as a. Certificate.
We don't know who goes in and fixes plumber. No one calls us.
And Seattle City Conrad, I mean, they apparently own the curb stop, so I'm not allowed to touch one.
Hmm.
Like I do here, I just. We all have wrenches and keys and. And I was like, hey, Mike, I'm doing this. You know, it's a little different. I get lived there, but I mean.
Yes.
You know, it's. Every town's different and not to make it difficult, but just to make it.
Safer.
Control.
I want, I'll look into what other communities our sides are doing as well.
And then on another note, maybe for you, Mr. Mayor, there's rumors of fire insurance companies dropping. Insurance on fire departments and we're pretty.
Oh, no. Well, there.
That new new requirements and stuff.
No, Mako was dropping coverage on special district, certain special districts within the state of Montana that were created under Title VII. Or through, um. Resolution by the county. So there's roughly what I saw Eric Bryson yesterday, I thought, I thought, uh. Legislature and roughly just shy of eight hundred districts are going to be getting off of effective. July first.
One of the other new things supposedly is no more cages in the back of the wildland trucks.
I have not seen that yet.
And if that's the case, we'll be fighting wildfires on foot.
Yeah, I have not seen that yet. So, and I.
Or, you know, or we're gonna have to re-plumb all the trucks so we can. Drive and square and cab.
I will reach out to the DNRC on that because that's, if anybody's gonna push it, it's gonna be DNRC, it's maybe. If Zach or anybody like that.
Yeah, I mean, it it all sounds good, but it doesn't work.
No, I'll look into that.
Well, I have.
Mel could answer more on the districts. I don't know if the commissioners have said anything about. Okay.
That's Mako's tune?
Yeah.
At July one?
Jan, yeah, their last day of coverage will be June thirtieth, eleven fifty nine P M.
This is all special districts.
They didn't create under Title VII. It's got their own board of directors. Um, their own FBI N has the ability to ask for or levy a tax.
So it wouldn't cover like the planning board?
No, client boards would be exempt, but.
It's appointed.
Yep, airport board.
Is appointed, not elected. They can't do anything without the commissioners approving, but they do.
I would look into that one because the reason they're getting off the boards is because of several airport boards.
I think ours is structured a lot differently.
They can bear up multiple different ways you can structure your airport board. This one is a joint city county airport board. That, um, so the commissioners have to sign off on their budget. They and.
There are small town airport boards that are autonomous there.
That are, so what you're talking about, Chris, is things like buying in water and sewer district.
Or sewer district, conservation districts, irrigation districts, those types of things. Got a benefit when you meet them. Um, so I'm not sure what fire service area is gonna do. Fire服务service area. So, Councilman, Councilman Cooley.
Gone up and it's been pretty quiet.
I will hop in then and say I had a long conversation with Brent Launer about urban deer. Very long conversation and he agrees, yes, that there's a problem. The winter this winter so far, the snow has really exacerbated pushing them into the city, but the snow melting, we're hoping it pushes them out. The long term answer is it's not going to get you better because the surrounding landowners, the Broken Hole. And fellows and the Spring Creek folks don't have enough access in there to start. Whacking enough deer, for lack of a better term, because you can get up to five dough licenses. It's not that you don't have the ability to do it. It's the inability for access to to start harvesting, um. We don't have a police department like the city of Helena does, or they do in other municipalities to handle that situation and. Lord forbid we'd ever have to go to that where.
Wouldn't fishing game?
No, no, they're gonna pass the buck, but they're gonna tell us it's okay.
They have a voluntary hunting.
And it's gonna. Forty five in the five X city. And I told him it becomes Thursday evening next to our houses. Like in over by Jody, count the deer out there and he did. He was north of a hundred and fifty deer one night.
Well, there were, there was one night out, night out top of field where they were, I mean, they were thick.
Yeah.
It was just ridiculous.
And and that close to town, you'd have to use a shotgun or something again.
Well.
We were out, not this Sunday, but the Sunday before that, and we just walked across the pasture. Checking the fences before we bring the cows back. Forty deer came out of that brush.
Oh, I don't doubt that.
That little section right there next to our house, forty.
I know, I stopped every night.
I've had sixteen in my yard at one time, so sixteen.
Um. I did have a conversation, we'll continue to do it. He was gonna reach out to Lance, uh, the Broken Hole. And he was gonna talk to Johnsons, all the Johnsons on that side. About, you know, possibly like getting some folks in there to to take care of some deer during the season. It's the only way we're gonna get them knocked down. Um, he had, later that week, he was having a meeting with the Spring Creek folks as well, talking about. Access and stuff off there, so.
Went to ask, um. Have you heard anything about highway improvements when stuff's starting?
I have not.
Okay.
They have not updated any step plans that I'm aware of.
And we're expecting this year still?
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
They're getting closer.
You would know, you probably see the documents that, yeah.
I know some land has started changing hands, but I'm just curious if we do.
I haven't, I've seen anything or, and I'll do some digging on the MDT website. If I run across the guys that get up on the hill, I'll ask them as well. Parking at the school. I know that's not my problem, is it? Please tell me it's not my problem. For, uh, tournament time, but I get pictures and complaints over.
It's not, it's not anything.
Thank you. I prefer them to the sheriff's office, but I just want to make sure. I don't want to be writing tickets. By any means. And I don't know how you enforce any parking up there anyways. Some are going sideways, some are going angled, so, okay. Um. Last thing I want to talk about is one of our claims. There was a like claim in there to, uh, leave law office for about twenty five hundred bucks on Edbomb Burner. Um. We are. Back and forth in the courts. This case is going to continue to go on. And it is going to continue to cost the city total money. Um. In my conversations with the guys at the legal office and some other folks around, you can expect this to be. Back in front of the Supreme Court. And back to mediation again to fix what was mediated once before. Um. What's where we're at now is. The city did not provide him with. Minutes and seconds to return the property to the original.
Grade.
The original grade. Although he, during the negotiation process, it was never asked for that. The settlement agreement was placed in front of him, saying that it had to be done. He never asked for it then. He signed the settlement agreement. And has not lived up to his end of it. And it's a bone of contention. It's tough because we got to figure out how we're gonna pay for this. And. If we don't, we walk away, it's my humble opinion, we could never enforce another ordinance in the city. Because all you gotta do is go file a lawsuit against the city per se where they give you more latitude and start ringing up the bill. And the city's gonna fold. So. I will work with Jody somehow to figure this out, but. I think it's my opinion and I want you guys to think about it. I think we need to proceed and keep going until we get it settled. So. It's not fun. I was over there again this evening taking pictures. So. We've asked for summary judgment. He's countersued us because for violating a Freedom of Information Act because we did not provide him with. The minutes and seconds, which we did not have. We provided him with a picture from Google Earth and it says right on Google Earth, it's not to be used as an accurate thing. And we knew that when we presented it, but it was better than what we had. And. Uh, we went through a discovery period where for the courts were. Strangely enough, when we went through it the last time, we had to have an arborist, an arborist he picked. But yet for the next court case, he has chosen to pick another non-arborist as a tree specialist rather than the one he picked. Because that one didn't agree with them and it's. For lack of a better term, it's childish. It's high schoolish, it's boorish, and it takes a buttload of time and money. Time they don't have, Mike doesn't have. And to be honest with you, time I don't want to have. But. I'm doing it slowly but surely. I had the last report I had to fill out was I had to answer claims A through M, A through all of the alphabet. Of material facts that he was trying to present, so. Going forward, I don't know if I should bring it as an action item to continue. But I want you guys to think about it and then. We'll come up with a plan. Yeah. Mel, that's the best I can give you on that one. I can provide you with all the paperwork, the litany of paperwork. To correspond with the bill, so. Other than that, I have nothing else. I see Paulie Cunningham here from Friends and Show Dog Park. And Rich Luski is here from the Skunk Auto Club. So Paulie, you want the floor first?
Well, Rich was here ahead of me. I'll. I have really good news. This is a bright spot after that. Um, the show at Dog Park has been very successful in raising funds. We now have almost. Well, it's fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars in our bank account, which is really amazing amount of money. And with only one foundation was gave to us so far, the Boe Brothers. And all the rest are people, um, largely residents of the area, a few relatives help, but, um, the residency area. So it's really, really great. And so, um, when I talked, I talked to. So it's really, really great. And so, um, when I talked, I talked to T Ben and they're all outstanding, we have our fingers crossed, but. They said, would you open it early? And I thought to myself, how could, how could we do that? And then. We decided that, yes, opening it swiftly will give people tangible evidence that we do exist. Cuz frankly donating to the cloud is hard to do and this way we act, cuz we can afford the fence. And so what we're gonna do is do two staged opening. We're gonna stage one is actually for the dogs because we'll include the fence. Uh, it'll have, uh, Tim Raymaker is gonna put some pathways down that are sort of like what. Lots of this path has, so people can plomp into the park without getting muddy and stuff. Um, we're gonna have signs up, obviously, uh, the. Rules and regulations, we're gonna get our insurance in order, we're gonna have paid for garbage pickup, we're gonna have food bags and tools. As well as a multitude of signs encouraging people to pick it up. And we'll have benches for people to sit on and the dogs will have all of their little playthings, which we already started collecting. Um, we have logs down there that will be spread about, we'll have piles of dirt, we have um, some lovely. Posts that will be put in the earth and the dogs will think they're trees, but they're not, they're just posts. But it'll be very um, nice. And then we're looking for some boulders. We've got our eyes on some boulders. That would like to um, move to the dog.
I was gonna ask if you'd had any luck on that.
I talked to them and suddenly they love their boulders, but we're still working. And then I mentioned that the conservators is passionate about their boulders. Um, but there'll be no water there cuz the water line. And frankly, that's winter rules in the dog park and all dog users know that you bring your own water in the winter cuz it's gonna be turned on. Anyway, and on the sun shelter also will be part of stage two. Uh, the, there are some lovely foundations that we wanna approach for additional money for these activities and. Their deadlines are later in this year and actually pay out into next year. So we thought waiting around for that. Is not fair to the dog public nor to the donors who already contributed. So we're going full speed ahead. Um, we'll get our fence up, uh, Mr. Raymaker will get the pathways in. And we hope to be in business, um, depends on.
Mother nature.
Mother nature and that Jim today said there's sixteen inches of frost in the ground. It's gonna take a while to thaw that out. Um, so maybe. May, and but anyway, it's very exciting. So I want to let you all know that it's coming. And I wanna thank you for your faith in the dog park group to run a good dog park. I think we're gonna do a great job.
And I have a couple of questions for Tom right here from our meeting and he will figure them out about setbacks.
Oh, yeah.
On the fence.
Uh, for the roadside, the backside towards the railroad tracks.
We're not worried about it.
That, that it's no man's land or sort of the DMZ where the old. Tracks were located, we don't want that. We're just gonna take the grassies on.
I would have to look it up, but going on a residential, you have up to your property line, you have pen.
They wanna be able to park on that side. They wanna be able so that they don't have to park across the street and walk across. They wanna have some parking on the same side that the fences are. If you want to parallel park or angle park.
We gotta practice, you know, someday we may have to use that.
Yeah.
And that'd be a good place to do it, so be no line from the park everyone, but. Um, I don't think people wanna back out on that.
Yeah, so I'm guessing we'll have to.
That's why I have it here for, for you and I to do that.
We have a very hypothetical stake. Line out there, I have all that, there's plenty of room for car and corridors and things. But yeah, we need to know that. But um, Eric from Montana Fence will be up to roll it again, just to make sure we have the exact.
And tell them the difference in four foot and five foot fence.
Oh, um, yeah, that was an interesting investigation. Uh, we contemplated going to four foot and so I asked Eric from Montana Fence. There's only a thousand dollars difference for all that fencing between the four foot and the five foot model. And we decided that in interest of safety of a five foot fence really is the way to go. And so we are going with a five foot fence. And um, it'll be very professionally done. We'll be very proud of it, I think.
The Olympic whitetail deer will get in there. That'll be about it.
Yeah.
And have any questions?
I do. If you wanna contribute, where do they do that?
Good question. Are there two ways to contribute? One is to go to um. Montana, uh, Shota Dog Park. And there's a way to do it online that's instantaneous and we love that. And there's another way to send a check to P O Box seven ninety seven. Five nine four two two, and we get the money input in our bank account. Either way is satisfactory and. We are a five oh one C three and we'll send you a thank you note that includes that information. Thank you, Steve. Any other questions you have and feel free to, you know, hit me up anytime if you have any worries about this matter.
Keep me up on the boulders. Keep you up to date on the boulders. On the rocks. It's always the mayor that gets stuck in federal prison with some rock, it's stone. Rich, what do you have for us tonight?
Um, well, I got most of mine answered before the meeting about the, the car show that the city wants to put on.
The Chamber. The Chamber.
The Chamber, yeah, well, Chamber City and, and Roadkill Car Boat or whatever. And then I got the uh. Answer for the, the leaf pickup. They went, they went in my neighborhood on Friday, so I moved my car so they'd get my leaf, but they never come back. They got my leaves.
Okay.
So and they're, they've been there for a long time, so they're pretty, pretty smackdown, smashed on each other, but. Uh, he looked like he was having a little bit of trouble with everybody else's too, with being wet and everything. So that's, that's all I have, yeah.
I didn't know they were out till I drove by the other day and I saw the back was hooked up to the truck.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's about it right now.
I'm off to Helena tomorrow to testify on House Bill eleven, which is our six hundred twenty five thousand dollar grant. For our next phase of our waters uh, system. I have weighed in to a couple of the members of that committee by letter. The nineteenth, we have Senate Bill six, which is a hundred twenty five thousand dollar uh, DNRC grant. I will not be there for that one cuz I have to hit the road to Western Montana, but I will submit written testimony for that one.
What's the Senate Bill number?
The House Bill six and House Bill eleven, they're both, they're both House, House bills, yeah, cuz they're funding. I've been, been down there for the city a couple of different times and we'll be back down there again. I'll keep you guys updated on the house bills that we're testifying on, so you know what we're up, looking at, okay? Anything else for the good of the order? Would be a hundred twenty five thousand dollar grant from DNRC. Thank you. The six twenty five is from the Montana Coal Endowment Trust.
Six twenty five.
Six hundred twenty five thousand. We are number twelve on the list of twenty five on that bill. And five on the other one, yes.
Which is very good.
Very good. Joe, as, how good, Joey? Have we ever been there before? Yeah. Yeah, and that's a testament to Great West as well. It's a testament to Joey, Tom and Mike. Getting her the documents and. Collect it and put together. We have a pretty cohesive team there with those guys, so. If we have nothing else, I will get us adjourned until seven February, five thirty P M. That'll be a big day for me. I have my two-year pet scan that day. All right, thanks, everybody. Good night.